Need a motion to adjourn this session, please? Close session.
Counselor.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Member Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Counselor Member Sims.
Aye.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And we need a motion. Motion to close this meeting, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Member Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Counselor Member Sims.
Aye.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Hey, Madam Clerk. I just need to get one piece of paper. Madam Clerk?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA: 10-4-6, that's the second notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Counselor Member Pataglia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Counselor Member Sims.
Here.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great power which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, there are no proclamations and presentations. Before we move forward, I would like to first have a moment of silence. We found out today that a gentleman by the name of J. Herbert Leverett from Hackensack, it was Hackensack's first African-American councilman, died at the age of 87. He was a councilman in 1965, right in the middle of the civil rights movement, an incredible time for that to happen. You know, the community came out, as they should, and they voted for this gentleman, and he served our city well for four years. So if we could have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We also had a 17-year veteran of the fire department in New York City pass away in a house explosion today as well, so keep him in our prayers, please. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the council in a regular meeting of September 12th, 2016?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Member Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Counselor Member Sims.
Aye.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. City manager's report, please.
Certainly. The first item is on the agenda. It's called the sanitation bid update. The staff has reviewed and analyzed the sanitation bids, and it is CFO's recommendation and my recommendation to the city council to reject the bids. The anticipated cost savings were not reflected in the bid results. I've taken the liberty to place the resolution on the agenda for the council to act tonight and to end the process. So it is on the agenda tonight. Number two, the 11th Annual Hackensack Street Festival is October 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The local merchants will be there, other merchants will be there, food vendors, games, attractions. It's a fun festival for all. We're also adding another event called the Hackensack Catwalk Art Exhibit. It's a outdoor art show celebrating local and regional artists at Banta Place in Hackensack. There'll be live music, art demos. That will be from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as well. So look forward to seeing the people of Hackensack and in the region to come and participate in that great event. It's being sponsored by the Main Street Business Alliance, Art Bergen, as well as the city council to some degree. Last item on the manager's report is my final comments to the city and as the city manager. I've always strived to do what is best for the citizens of Hackensack. Some of my decisions and recommendations have not always been popular. What have I relied on? I have relied on wise counsel from our city attorney. Your honor, I've relied on wise counsel from Ray Wiss, our labor attorney, and before them with Mr. Screeville. There are five clergy in this city that I've relied heavily on, which four of them are anonymous and will never be revealed by me as who they are. I can reveal one, the fifth one, because she has since retired from her duties as chaplain to the police department and has retired from her congregation, and that is Pastor Manning Fontaine. I will say Pastor Manning was on speed dial because I needed her for wisdom and for prayer. The other four, I would meet on a weekly basis, early in the morning, and we would pray for this city, for the council, for the people of Hackensack, for each member of the employees of the Hackensack, for the police department, for the fire department, for DPW, for all the clerical work, communications employees. Why? Because that's what I'm made of. My allegiance is to the God who made the heavens and the earth, and Him first. And those five wise clergy understood that in me and kept my confidence for the last two years. What have we done in the last two years? It's actually just a couple days prior to was my two-year anniversary. We've accomplished a lot. We've done a lot of significant things in this city. I think we've, as a council and a manager and the city employees, have accomplished a lot. We've endured significant personnel changes, retirement of Art Koster, John Flanagan, Mike Mordaga, but we've welcomed some really outstanding individuals to fill their place, Simeon Cumberbatch, Wayne Vriesema. And we have established, with the help of Simeon Cumberbatch, an officer in charge and a chain of command around Captain Aquila, including Captain Coffey and Captain Basigliya. That has been a success. We are in transition, but they are leading. They are leading without a director, and I hope the goal of the council is reached where we can eventually appoint a new chief. What are some of the other things that have accomplished? And I know my dear friend in the audience may disagree, but that's okay. I believe we successfully negotiated some good deals with HUMC. We built a bridge with them, eliminated a monstrous tax appeal potential loss of $4.5 million, and we've come to an agreement with them on that agreement. We've also have an MOU for a new set of air rights across First Street with a $1 million upfront payment and a consistent yield of $100,000 per year, negotiated in next 15 years with a renewal clause to allow them to build the state-of-the-art surgical center. We've settled a lot of contracts, the Fraternal Order of Police, the senior officers. We also now have an MOU for them to extend another two or three years. We settled the white-collar contract in 2015, the communication workers' contract in '16, the crossing guards' contract in '15, the firefighters' contract in '15. These contracts were reached with expertise from Director Cumberbatch, our labor attorney, Ray Wiss, Jaclyn Stout, my executive assistant, and without Jim Mangin, who worked countless hours crunching numbers on alternatives to try to reach an agreement. You're amazing. We have two more to go. Those are not going to be easy. And Ted, I wish you the best on those two. They will be in your court. We've met with the blue collar at least eight or nine times without resolution. We've met with the police, the PBA, three times. We're waiting a decision on how that union's going to be structured in the future. One thing I will say is, a man that tries to keep his promises, unfortunately, I'm not going to be here to keep this one. I had promised a lot of the previous unions that I would stay the course, stay the course on maintaining the mandates from the state of New Jersey. However, we did broach that with the firefighters to try to avoid the steps, which some things were promised. However, I hope that line is held with the police contract. The firefighters did get more, but that was with reason, and I'm sure we can work something out with the police department. One of the greatest accomplishments came to fruition today with the wall-breaking ceremony at the Performing Arts Center. That was a complicated task to accomplish, and I thank the council for being steadfast in sticking to your commitments to that. Along that, with that, is the Atlantic Street Park. When I arrived, there was issues with the community in the neighborhood. I made it a priority to move that project forward, and with good teamwork, we made it happen. Atlantic Street Park is a gem and will be a future gem in this city, and I'm glad to have made a difference in that. We have the Main Street, State Street conversion plans are completed. We'll be going out to bid in end of the year. We hope to start construction in the spring. That will bring our redevelopment to a real progression and a commitment by the city. The Carver Park Splash Park. There's nothing better than running through the water in the soup. Also, developing a five-year capital plan, which has not, which had not been consistently done in this city, with the CFO and the department heads, is a great accomplishment. We included over $3 million of paving. Over the last two years, we have impacted over 66 streets in the city of Hackensack with partial or all reconstructed paving. And I can tell you, there's more to come, even this year. There will be more paving this year. We have, due to quality engineering and quality site inspections by our project manager, our engineer is Pete Tenkate from Boswell and Wayne Vriesema, who works for the city, we have gotten the biggest bang for our dollar possible, and we're going to be able to pave 2015 and 2016 budgets, I think we met the council's expectations. Jim and I have worked very hard. Taxes did go up, however, they were reduced every year since I was here, from the year before. I enjoy utterly the management of the redevelopment projects and working with the team of the mayor and the deputy mayor on moving those projects forward. There is so much interest in the city of Hackensack that the projects in the pipeline and the redevelopment in our city is really happening. The other thing I'd like to point out, I started a year-end report, which was done prior to the budget that had never been done, and Ted, I would encourage you to do that. The staff is already, has that in place. It'll be an awesome PowerPoint that will summarize the year of where the tax dollars were spent, so that you can, so each taxpayer can see what services were provided, from the police to the fire, to the DPW, to the CFO, everything is included. We've improved code enforcement. We've hired more personnel. There's always need for code enforcement, and they've done a good job. I brought up the standards, the annual reviews of the employees to try to make them work and be incentivized by giving them feedback early on. Getting back to redevelopment, I have to truly give a lot of credit to two individuals. One of them is Fran Reiner from DMR, and the other is the redevelopment attorney, Brian Nelson. Those are invaluable assets, as I know you two know that. They are awesome professionals that love this city. Back to paving our streets, 63 streets have either been paved or have been improved over the last two years. We are on the right track with the COA process within the court system. I also want to encourage Ted, the new city manager, to seek assistance, because I've already laid the groundwork, with the Hackensack Housing Authority. They have the ability to implement a housing rehabilitation program for those who own their homes with low and moderate income residents to allow for the, for free, on a grant, if you qualify, to have window replacement, boiler replacement, new roof. What that does is provide people with low income or fixed incomes to improve their home, to make a better living. It's not just about Main Street, it's about the side streets, and this program could easily flush in $500,000 to $750,000 for those improvements, to those who are in need. The Phase 1 sewer separation project is completed. The Phase 2 sewer separation project is under design. What is that going to do for us? It's going to reduce flooding, it's going to clean up our river. Hackensack is being recognized by the state of New Jersey. In fact, the mayor hosted an event here this week with the state and with other communities. We are being recognized as a leader to fight and clean up the Hackensack River from pollution from our combined sewers, and we're doing it by good design and getting grants from the state and getting loan forgiveness. The 2016 budget, I can say, meeting with Jim, we're in good shape, 2016, and some of the reasons why is our legal fees are down because we have a dedicated city attorney and Judge Carver and Kate Walsh, and they're an exceptional team that gives us very wise advice. We do have a couple areas of concern, police and fire overtime budgets. I've spoken to Chief Freeman. He is working hard to keep that in check without diminishing protection from the fire department for the residents. We have a crack team that is second to none, and they keep us safe. Captain Aquila, I met with him and the senior officers. They have actually taken to the road. They do take turns with some of the officers to go out on the road to supplement patrol. They do it kind of in secret because they don't want anybody to know. They do go out on occasion, which is something new. We are short officers. We have some issues with workers' comp, and, but we have solutions. We have more officers that are in the academy, and we are working overtime. So, in closing, first of all, I'd like the city council to thank the city council for having the faith in me two years ago to hire me and to put their trust in me to always try to do the right thing. I know we always haven't agreed, but that's okay. I especially want to thank the employees of the city. I know some of them are probably happy I'm going, but that's okay, too. Being at the top, you have to make unpopular decisions with the eye on the goal of what is the best for the city of Hackensack. I want to particularly thank my executive assistant, Jaclyn Stout, and my office staff, who literally kept me on task, kept me focused, and I will admit, they talked me off a ledge more than once. So, it gives me, gives me good feelings leaving the city of Hackensack. I believe Hackensack has a very bright future ahead of it. The city is moving forward and reinventing itself. Now it's up to you guys to just carry the ball forward. It ends my city manager's report.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into, I'm sure later on, we'll all share some comments. Let's get these ordinances and resolutions out of the way. Resolution 353-16.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 33-2016, refunding bond ordinance of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $10,65,000 aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds and/or refunding notes of the city for the purpose of paying amounts owing to various taxpayers for taxes levied in the city and appropriating the proceeds of such refunding bonds and refunding notes to such purpose. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I need to make a motion to amend this ordinance. Section 2, letter B, should read "The aggregate shall not exceed $10,65,000." There's a typo in that particular section that says $275,000, so that replacement needs to be made.
Okay. Do you need a second, please?
Need a second on that?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Counselor Member Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Counselor Member Sims.
Aye.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
This was for the motion to amend ordinance number 33-2016. Section 2, letter B, which should read "The aggregate cost shall not exceed $10,65,000." I need a motion to open to the public.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Member Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Counselor Member Sims.
Aye.
Counselor Member Kiligatus.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Richard Sulkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. First of all, I support the ordinance. I'm not up here to speak against it. Few comments, however, I think are appropriate. The ordinance indicates that there is a list of the settled appeals. Do you have that? Does the council have it? No, does the council have it? Council review it.
Each and every one? No.
No. All right, then, perhaps you didn't notice, and I leave this to the judge's call, I'm not even going to put him on the spot, but I'd like him to think about it, on page 12 of 14, United Water Company is represented by Archer and Greener. I think the term conflict of interest comes to mind, but your call, your honor. Last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you took great umbrage at comments made by Lynn Hurwitz, and you specifically cited the $30 million in tax appeals your council was facing, and you said no one challenged you on it, so it's got to be true. And you said the term "follow the money." I say "follow the money." John, I want to follow the money. Thanks to the CFO, I got a copy of the list that I guess you guys have not reviewed. And John, my problem with you is you need to take ownership. I went through this list very, very carefully. I want to give you some data, which apparently you haven't reviewed. There's 520 separate document numbers. Now, they're not 520 separate cases, there's multiple years, as you're aware. You came into office July 1st, 2009, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Out of these 520 items, 11, a grand total of 11 preceded that date. That's 2%. 98% of these tax appeals came under your watch. You have responsibility here. Now, if the other four say, "Not our problem, we didn't create it," you can't say that, and you should stop saying it because you're as responsible as the prior council.
I totally disagree with you, Mr. Sulkin.
Well, you can totally disagree, but as they say, liars figure, but figures don't lie, John. Dates don't lie.
I need to know what's out there in order to make that decision, and I wasn't aware of these.
Now, let me ask you this, because I have, as you know, some background with how the municipal, maybe it's changed under this administration, I don't know, but when the tax attorney would submit recommendations in a letter form, settlements could be distributed to the council.
Well, let me ask you this.
No, no, did that change?
Repeat yourself, please.
When the tax attorney or attorneys, I don't know, maybe you don't do that now, I don't know what you do now, reviews a case, discusses it with the assessor, discusses it with the appraiser, comes up with, discusses it obviously with his adversary or her adversary, comes up with a figure, submits a letter to the council recommending a settlement.
Correct.
Okay. So you sat there for four years between 2009 and 2013, and I guess recommendations were coming in, but no resolutions were going on, no?
I don't believe so, no.
You don't, I don't know what that means.
What I'm saying, Rick, and I'll ask you this question, if you're saying I knew about that 95% of the $30 million, then you're saying the whole council knew about it as well, correct?
Yeah, I am, of course I am.
I don't believe so, because I don't believe we had all those numbers.
Okay, so you're saying, so you're not looking back at an administration. The four you served with, 2009, 2013, are as innocent as you in what happened.
I'm just telling you, I wasn't aware of $30 million in tax appeals until I became, shortly after I became mayor.
Okay. And do you have any reason to believe that Melphi or Sasso or Towns or Menezes had any more knowledge?
I can't speak for them, sir. That's what I'm asking you.
Do you have any information to make that accusation?
I can't speak for them. All I know is what I was presented did not add up to $30 million. What I was presented with, through presentations by our tax attorney and auditor, was nowhere near $30 million, okay? And as I believe, there's two reports, one, the report that the council gets on the yearly audit and budget, and one that the city manager and the auditor has, and they're totally separate, and that's where I would look, but...
And you got that report every single year, did you not?
I didn't get the other one. No, I got mine.
Okay, and everybody else got theirs. I mean, you certainly can't, based on what you've just said, you can't make accusations.
Number one, let's back up here. Let's pertain to this ordinance, all right? You're supposed to be speaking in this ordinance.
And I am, John, because we're going into years.
Okay.
So don't tell me I'm off base, because I'm not. And 286 out of the 520...
We're speaking about this bond and this ordinance.
That's right, and there's a list of cases, and that's what I'm talking about.
That's not what we were just talking about.
286 of the 520 are totally the ownership of this council. You understand that? You haven't looked at the list, but you're voting on the ordinance. 286 out of the 520, this council, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016. You have ownership. You all have ownership of this. Stop bellyaching about it. It hasn't curtailed you. You've bonded for the Leo Dome, you've bonded for the M&amp;M improvements, you've bonded for everything you wanted. It's wearing thin. It's wearing thin, John.
All I know, Mr. Sulkin, is when shortly after we took office, the numbers were around $30 million on inherited tax appeals.
Well, and you see from tonight...
So I don't know where you get...
Well, I get from your information, your CFO prepared, John, that's where I get...
Jane, what do you have to say about this?
Yeah, can I just make one comment? In terms of the list of appeals, okay, you've got to understand, these bond ordinances are unique, okay? You don't bond ordinance for tax appeals. But what you do is during the course of a year, you do pass resolutions settling tax appeals.
Stop the clock, please, Sophie.
Stop blocking the clock.
Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, you're right.
You've got to get that straight. One is... One is...
So, during the course of the year, I believe in this particular bond ordinance, there were at least 10 or 11 resolutions. Each one of those resolutions had the list of cases that it was pertaining to attached to the resolution. The bond ordinance then takes those 11 resolutions and bundles them all together, okay? The cases have been reviewed when they were resolutions, okay? It's the same list, you know, the same list I provided you, and you know, Rick, if you saw in the last column, you'll see resolution number...
Yes.
Okay, pull those resolutions, and you'll see the same cases, you know, so they, well, you're saying that they weren't reviewed and they were reviewed, okay?
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying at all.
That's exactly what you said.
No, not what I said. I just think, John, step up to the plate. You were on the council 2009 on, these fall in your lap, get over it, move forward, and stop saying, "We faced this disaster," because your former councilmates didn't create it.
Well, I'm still gonna go back, and I will sit with the CFO to get the numbers of what we inherited when we took over. That's really the number that we've been complaining about.
The ordinance you inherited from yourself, John, that's my point, that's my only point. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Chris Coley, Hackensack.
Mr. Coley?
I've heard about this $30 million, and we're going for another $10 million now. And according to my mathematics, the $25 million we spent on the domes and everything else, we should only be borrowing $5 million. But then again, I'm not a mathematician, I'm not a wizard of borrowing money that has already been borrowed and we're respending it, and it ain't 'cause the taxpayers are dying. All I know is you're borrowing an additional $10 million for something that we should only have to have borrowed, $5 million for $30 million. And that's, and if I'm wrong, maybe I should go back to school and learn how to do math.
Anybody else on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion to close to the public? Have an offering, a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Need a resolution?
Need a motion to adopt, please.
As amended.
As amended.
Offer.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 33-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 354-16.
This is the final adoption of ordinance number 34-2016, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 62 entitled Schedule 13 Bus Stops. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 34-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 355-16.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 35-2016, an ordinance amending Part 1 entitled Administrative Legislation, Chapter 13A entitled Condominium and Cooperative Unit Owners Advisory Board, Section 3 entitled Membership and Organization. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward and give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 35-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 356-16.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 36-2016, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 70 entitled Schedule 21 Parking Meter Zones. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Regina de Posco, Parker Avenue. I just wanna make it clear that the only change in this is two 15-minute library drop-off spaces, okay?
Correct.
Because there was some discussion during the COW about the 9 o'clock, however, that 9 o'clock was changed a year ago.
It's been in effect, but not enforced.
Yes. Well, it's in effect. If you choose not to enforce it, that's a whole nother thing, but the only change that this is, is two 15-minute library drop-offs.
That is correct.
All right, 'cause it's 9 o'clock, it's been 9 o'clock, whether it's been enforcement's an issue...
It's been like that.
...in a lot of things, anyway, but I just want that clarified, that that's all...
It's just the two, the two spots at the library. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Chavo, Hudson Street. In keeping with that note, which means you're still gonna keep that 9 o'clock...
No. We had a public discussion before, it's not being enforced right now, we don't plan on having enforcement, but we plan on changing, amending the ordinance to 6 o'clock, all right? And the reason, and you may not, and there's a very good point here that was brought up before, Kathy, is that once these apartments are open, these people are here, if the parking meters are free at 6 o'clock, they're gonna park on the street.
But that's not happening yet, so...
Exactly.
And you're killing the rest of them.
Exactly, that's exactly our point, and that's why we're going to change it, and then, before the apartments open and it all starts happening...
Right, let's wait till we know what's gonna happen.
Then we're gonna change it.
Also, if these apartments were done right, there should be ample parking for the apartments, so they don't have to.
Right.
Because you can't have apartments and...
But you always have the chance, people getting a second car, people having guests over...
No, because when they did it right in Florida, everybody had a parking space and a garage, and nobody ever interfered with the commercial part.
Florida's a little wide open in here.
You can't have one and the other, not the way you're doing it, because you're giving all these apartments not enough parking, and of course, they're gonna, they wanna park there. And I hate when Fran says, "Oh, there's parking on the street," yes, but it's already taken by the people who are shopping, so it can't be taken by the residents. So, the bottom line is, is that we're not doing it right, and we're putting more congestion...
Well, part of this ordinance, the 9 o'clock ordinance, is to stop people from parking on the streets, residents overnight.
So, as of this moment, it's not on anymore, 'cause that flashing light...
It's not being enforced. We're not enforcing it right now, and we're going to move forward to amend it.
Do people know what's going on?
We're going to move forward to amend it to 6 o'clock.
Okay. And the restaurant people have to, they have to tell, so they didn't lose the customers already.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 350, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Need a motion?
I need a motion to adopt.
Offer.
Okay, I'm looking at the next one. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 36-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 357-16.
This is the introduction of ordinance number 37-2016, an ordinance amending Part 1 entitled Administrative Legislation, Chapter 3A entitled Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Alliance, Section 1 entitled Establishment Membership, and Section 4 entitled Powers and Duties, to change the committee name to Hackensack Municipal Alliance.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, ordinance 37-2016 as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 18th, 2016, at 8:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that city clerk bein', she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance, according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 358-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 38-2016, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Poor Street in the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey.
Need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
This is 357-16.
358.
358. The vacation of the street.
I'm gonna stand on that one.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 38-2016 as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 18th, 2016, at 8:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein', she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance, according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of what time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I wanna say on this one, it's because it's an introduction stage, and I recommend we all go take a look at this, just to make sure we all know what we're talking about, and it's a little confusing. And I myself wanna go there, I wanna just make sure that doesn't, it's not detrimental to any other property owners in the area before we move forward.
And that's my main reason to the public of standing, is I just don't have enough information at this point to move forward with it.
Okay, resolution 359-16.
This is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated September 27th, 2016, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigetis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 360-16.
The resolution authorizing exemption for Planned Parenthood of Bergen County for the 2016 tax year.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call. Resolution 361-16.
It's a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 362-16, payment of bills.
It's a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 361-16.
It's a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 362-16, payment of bills.
It's a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
This time we move into the consent agenda. Is there anybody on the council who has any objections to anything that is on the consent agenda and needs a poll? At this time?
Nothing.
Okay.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of resolution 363-16, resolution endorsing the New Jersey Department of Transportation project for the reconstruction of Bridge over Route 4. Resolution 364-16 is a resolution authorizing to propose Bergen County community development grants for 2017. Resolution 365-16 is a resolution authorizing shared service agreement between the city of Hackensack and the borough of Maywood for shared use of Maywood Firearms Range and the city of Hackensack's firearms training simulator. Resolution 366-16, resolution authorizing awarding of contract for the engineering services to Boswell Engineering for the M&amp;M Building. Resolution 367-16 is a resolution authorizing awarding of contract for architectural services to DM Architects for the M&amp;M Building. Resolution 368-16 and resolution authorizing award of contract to Millennium Strategies for Grant Management Consultant. Resolution 369-16, a resolution authorizing the rejection of all solid waste collection bids. Resolution 370-16, a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2016 Bergen County Community Development Block Grant application for road resurfacing for the city of Hackensack. And resolution 371-16 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate. We need a motion.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
This time anybody from the public would like to come up and speak, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mark McCart, UPSU, Hackensack resident. Well, we're certainly happy to hear that Hackensack is scrapping their plans for privatization. And we certainly want to thank the citizens. We certainly want to thank the citizens who stood by us, who put our signs out on their lawns, the deacons, the preachers, the NAACP, and I'm sure I've forgotten some people, but everyone who stood together. I'm very proud of the people of Hackensack for standing by these workers. But there's still some issues out there that we need to look at. The article in the record stated that you, the mayor, regretted the uncertainty that this created. But do understand that whatever your intention was or your regrets, this did create uncertainty. This did create fear amongst these employees. More than that, these employees once again felt disrespected. They feel they are not valued. They feel that their lives don't matter, that their livelihoods can be put out to bid. And they feel this way very often. They feel this way when I meet with them, they tell me this on a very regular basis. So, the privatization was just one of the many straws of disrespect that they felt from this council and from this administration. These employees are the foundation of this city. They are the ones that provide the services to the taxpayers. They are the ones out on the street doing the nitty gritty work that we, the taxpayers, want done so we don't have to do it ourselves. If you want to truly rebuild this city, you need a solid infrastructure. These workers are your infrastructure. And they need to be treated with the same care when you talk about repaving streets and the sewage systems and all those things which are part of the infrastructure, they need to be treated just as well and with the same kind of concern and forethought. But when we sit at the negotiating table, they're told there is no money. We have tax caps, we can't go over them. But yet, over the past month or so, 20 or so raises have gone out to some non-contractual, some contractual employees. Some of those raises will equal over the year more than a 2% tax cap. So, what is the message that you're sending to the employees? That they aren't worth it? That you have the money, but you don't want to give it to them because they aren't valued? You can imagine what that does to the morale. It just seems that some things never change. We hear from administrations, and it's not just Hackensack, in a lot of different towns, that it's all about fiscal responsibility. But then we see basically that the council spend like drunken sailors. They have money for everything but the workers, the people that really matter. So, once again, I stand up here and I challenge this council. We are seeing a changing of the guard, and I am asking you to show leadership, to send a message from this chair all the way down to every working man that this city respects its workers, that you believe that they deserve a fair wage increase, that they deserve a fair contract that is enforced fairly and equally, not where we pick and choose who gets what. And they deserve, just as importantly, to be treated with dignity and respect every single day they show up to work. So, I will tell you that we will continue to engage this council. We will continue to engage the citizens and various political people in this town, the churches, the whoever we can, whoever will listen, we will keep talking to them. Because if this can, if this council cannot show the leadership, we will find people to sit in those seats who can show that kind of leadership. So, we need you to step up and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick side note to Mr. Trost. Good luck, and best to you and your family in all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mark. It's been a pleasure dealing with you, and I mean that.
Jim.
Can I say something?
Give you one second.
One second.
Let the councilman have the phone for a minute.
Can you give me some information about where are the negotiations about the sanitation department with their contract?
You should be asking me that.
Yeah. Okay, so I ask you.
We've had, I believe, eight negotiations over the last year and a half. The union decided to ask for a mediator. There are very few mediators that function in that capacity in the state of New Jersey. I believe the next mediation session is October.
27.
October 27th. Now, the previous one was in August. So, that's part of the lag.
We've been in mediation since, uh, since May 10th.
May 10th.
Yeah.
And I think we've met twice.
We met twice, and we had at least one canceled, possibly two canceled, I'm not sure.
Why that happened?
Uh, the mediator.
So, wait, what's, where are we at right now?
But, uh, as David indicated, there were, we've had seven or eight sessions prior to mediation, you know, with DPW, and David will tell you, which is probably twice as many as we've had with the other units that we've settled with. And then beyond that, we can't really say much, because it is negotiations.
Can I ask a question? Has any member of this council been in any of these negotiations?
Absolutely not.
Have we been even discussing the negotiations with the garbage or sanitation union?
You're not allowed to negotiate.
So, it's fair to say we have not had any input or any say in what's happened up to now as far as union negotiations and pay of the workers?
You are the policymakers, and you have made the policy to negotiate within the state regulations. And part of the state regulations is there is an overall 2% cap on the budget, operating budget, that does not include, um, it includes money that's paid out, but, but certain things are carved out, like certain medical expenses that are over the percent that the state health plan is, believe bonding.
Dead service.
Dead service is out. Uh, so, we've been negotiating in good faith, and we have settled, I believe, six union contracts, I think, or, and we have a memorandum understanding on the seven. And they've been following all the same parameters. So.
My question is, has this council has not been presented any type of numbers to decide on for a settlement?
No, we haven't reached that.
That's all I want to know. Thank you. Next, please. Thank you.
Hi, Randy Glover. Um, I want to echo the gentleman that was up here about the sanitation, but I just want to personally mention two people that helped. We always hear about the NAACP and the people who seem very familiar in general, but you have Reverend Carolyn Davis.
Mm-hmm.
Who is always very instrumental in the community and dealing with these kinds of situations. And then you have, I don't know if I can say his name, but I'll just say the shop steward who was very instrumental in making sure that this was brought to the forefront for his employees, his colleagues, his coworkers. Besides that, Dave, I think you're a great guy. Okay, so, I'm gonna miss you. City council, thank you for coming out to, well, a lot of the events, but thank you for coming out to the shops at Riverside. It was great to see you guys. Um, I hope we can do more over there. Um, and great town, and I think it's just gonna grow and get better. And everybody on the city council, I enjoy you guys. You've been good to me, and I don't know about everybody else, but I can just say what my relationship has been with all of you has been very pleasant. So, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next, please.
Richard Solken, Hackensack, New Jersey. John, at the last meeting, I raised an issue that was disturbing to me, and you know what that was in terms of your comments at a hearing, deposition, uh, where you described my conduct regarding the Civil Resource Officer negotiations back in 2013 as being unethical. And I asked you to reconsider that, walk it back, rephrase it, uh, explain in detail what my contact, what my involvement was. I would like to ask you if you have any intention of doing that.
I haven't given it much thought since we talked last, Mr. Solken. Um, I don't think, yeah, I, I still disagree with what happened and the way it was done, in my opinion, in my opinion, in my, my ethics. Okay? To me, I thought it was wrong. And that's when I'm gonna leave it at.
Wrong is okay.
Right.
Wrong, I can accept.
To me, what you did, to me, that's ethical. Wrong is, to me, wrong is unethical to me. I'm sorry, but that's just me.
Well.
You know what? In a legal sense, like you explained in the court of law, I don't even know, you know, the answers to that. I just know what I feel.
Well, your feeling and, and what is reality, I'm afraid, diverge, John. Um, but let me get to the matter at hand. Again, our, our key words tonight are follow the money. Your words. So, I decided to follow the money, and I was, because I've been puzzled, I've been puzzled for the last two years. I didn't understand why in 2015 you participated in an executive session, you had no business, and there was a preliminary approval of a, uh, major revision to very solid developers' agreement. Uh, and I stand by my estimates and my conservative calculations that you cost the city, you didn't vote on it ultimately, $20 million in the long run under the term of that lease, under the air rights. And just June 28th, so-called community host agreement, which if I heard Mr. Trost correctly, I'm not sure, it, it seems to be now a done deal. Is, is that correct? Are we in negotiations anymore, or we just now have a community, host community agreement? I don't know what we have. You've approved that, and that's another $24 million. So, we're approaching $50 million given back to the HUMC of very hard negotiated rights for the taxpayers of Hackensack. And I keep asking myself, why? Why? Why are they doing this? I don't know. I think maybe we got our answer.
Rick, Rick, the, what I referred to was not.
Stop the clock.
No, that's all right. It was not the host agreement, it was another agreement.
Okay.
For an expansion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. John, uh, you were asked under oath a few weeks ago that you got a, a change, it was you asked, promotion, wasn't a promotion, from plant operations to securities, safety specialists.
Safety specialist, yes.
Safety specialist.
Mm-hmm.
And then you were asked the following question. Remember this? Did Mr. Rotino have any role in you getting a raise at the medical center? Remember what your answer was?
Not to my knowledge, I believe.
Not to my knowledge? That, that's the, I, you don't have weaseling and out of an answer, I mean, a no or yes? I mean, come on, you don't know?
I applied for the job, Rick, and I got the job. Okay? Was on, online.
And did Mr. Rotino have any role in getting a raise? Did he, any role in you getting, switching positions? And again, same answer, not to my knowledge. John, you know, if, if someone wasn't as kind as me toward you, they might say, you've been bought. They might say, like, I'm an Old Testament man, but the guy in New Testament sold out the 30 pieces of silver. I don't know if he sold out the city or not, but it sure looks that way.
I disagree with you, Mr. Solken.
Fine, you disagree, John, but I got, you know.
As usual.
Not to my knowledge is not an appropriate answer for that kind of question.
Next, please.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. Um, first, I thank you. Finally, with the sanitation, months and months and months, going back and forth, finally you have agreed with what we've been saying all along, it wasn't worth it, don't do it. But now, can we get them their wage increases? Can we get them trucks? Can we get them the tools they need to do the job properly? Because that has all been put on hold because you were going to outsource it. So, can we concentrate on that? Um. I was asked by Rich Galber, and he asked me to tell you that it was from him, but I was thinking the same thing. Um, there's, let's see, Saddle Brook, Wayne, East Rutherford, Wallington, Wyeth, Fairlawn, Elmwood Park, Rochelle Park now is doing it. Back the blue with a blue line.
So, I guess they were.
Hackensack hasn't done it. Where the county seat suggested, you know, right out here.
Came to mind.
Dayton Central. Okay, came to mind, but, you know, all these other towns are doing it, and I don't see any, I didn't hear anything at the, the cow, I, I don't see anything online about it. Um, we need to show support for our police, and we need to show them some respect, because I understand they're in contract negotiations too, and, you know, they haven't gotten respect at the bargaining tables from what I, from what I hear. So, um, Rich Galber asked me to, you know, bring this to your attention, but it's been on my mind too, but there's half a dozen other towns in Bergen County that have done it, and more doing it. Let's not be a follower, let's be leaders on things. Um, you guys were talking about Poor Street. Let me tell you where it is. Vincent Street goes to Crow's Nest. Dunkin' Donuts on your left, right behind Dunkin' Donuts. That's Poor Street, the part, part you're considering vacating. Poor Street on the right is used, the one on the left is not. Um, it's from the map that was on there. Uh, council meeting dates. You had set council meeting dates, and I was at the meeting, should we have it on Halloween? Should we not have it on Halloween? It was a big to-do when you were setting the calendar. Now you've decided not to have a meeting on Halloween. Now you've decided that there's one special meeting on the 12th and a regular meeting on the 18th. Um, resolution, it was done by resolution? Can you, like, undo it by resolution or ordinance, whichever it was? Let the people know, not just something on the website, not everybody looks at the website. Give people advance notice that there is not gonna be on Halloween, which I guess is a good thing. But I remember being at the meeting, we had a lot of discussions, should we have it on Halloween? Will we come in costume? Um, you know, it was a whole, whole thing. Um, you're talking about Route 4, the DOT project. Oh, I Google a lot, I Googled it. It's starting in 2020. However, there was a notice that there was just a meeting on June 28th at Riverside Square. Did anybody from Hackensack go to this meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And when you were talking before, you didn't have the information as to when it was gonna start and how long it was gonna be? Who went?
Our project manager.
And so, that information doesn't get shared? It wasn't on our website? It was open to everybody, it was open to the public.
Did you go?
I was not aware of it. You got the notice, did you not?
And it was published in a newspaper.
You got the notice. Did you share it with the residents at any time?
No, it's published by the state of New Jersey, and it's a state and New Jersey meeting.
It affects the city of Hackensack because it was in Hackensack, the bridge between Hackensack and Teaneck is going to be closed, and you did not see the need to notify the residents of Hackensack that there was going to be a meeting on this project.
No, I did not.
And you think you do what's in the best interest of the residents?
Yes, I do.
You are so wrong. Adios, Mr. Trost.
Next.
Feeling is mutual.
You are so rude. You are so rude. You treat me very poorly.
Please, please, no back and forth, please.
No back and forth.
Please.
John, you have let this man, you have let, you are not allowed to touch me.
Stop.
You're not allowed to touch me.
Mrs. De Pasco, please, stop.
You have allowed him, allowed him to do this.
Mrs. De Pasco, you made some comments as well that were not exactly nice.
I don't think he has acted in the best interest of this city.
And that is your opinion, but you have, you know.
And I have a lot of people who agree with it.
Please. Mr. Servo, how are you tonight?
I'm fine, Rich Servo, 46, Spring Valley Ave, Hackensack. Um, you know, next, next week is Columbus Day, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay on a quote from Columbus, okay? It's, uh, "You can never cross the ocean until you have the courage to lose sight of the shore." Okay? So, with that thinking, it's food for thought. How about losing sight of the shore, John? How about some new thinking to get yourself across the ocean? Okay? Look, give up some of these things you're, you're stuck on, and we'll talk about them because we don't have, we only have five minutes, but there's lots of things you just won't budge on. I think you have a stubborn kind of man, and so, okay? Please. Mr. Trost, thanks for your, uh, for your years here, but, you know, state or anything, municipality governing is a sailing ship, okay? And you're abandoning ship, okay? And so, I don't, I don't really see that as anything to praise. You're, you're quitting, you're leaving.
I'm retiring.
You're retiring, yeah. But you're, you're, you're running scared somewhere.
I, I never run scared.
Okay. Now, all the things, all the things you mentioned tonight, okay, about your work, which, you know, you praising yourself, wonderful, it's fine, but you never once mentioned the people of Hackensack, never. You never said anything about the people of Hackensack, okay? So think it over, and, and those are the people that paid your salary for the last two years, okay? All right. Um, the, uh, the, you, you also mentioned the ministers that you're inspired by. You mentioned the, the fifth minister, and, and that's all well and good. I'm, I'm glad that you were inspired by her. But were you ever inspired by the fifth Beatle? Huh? What are you?
Are, are, you're the fifth Beatle, so yes.
Thank you very much, okay? Thanks a lot, okay? Now, I heard bikes on sidewalks, uh, earlier, okay? Now, bikes on sidewalks, okay, yeah, everybody dislikes that. But bikes are on sidewalks because you'll get killed in the road. This is uncivilized here at Hackensack. There's no bike paths. Every other town around us, it's safe to ride a bike in, not this town. That's why those bicyclists are on the sidewalk, okay? Mr. Battaglia, okay?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, sorry, okay. Also, what about, uh, we, we've heard a lot about contracts and negotiating contracts by union employees. Wonderful. Why can't they be negotiated in public? So the public can hear what the heck is being negotiated, what's going on? Any, any comments? Quick, before I get cut off here, what? How about it? Nothing?
I don't think the union or the city would agree to that.
Why?
Because they're closed.
Why?
Because that's the law.
It's the law? Okay, so it's sort of a private government? It's not, you know, it's just...
Well put.
Okay. All right, also, let's, let's move on here to, uh, you know, we hear a lot about the hospital too, okay? The money, Mr. Salt brought up something. And, and, and our, our medical center is a huge part of the city here, it is. But everyone refuses to call them in on the carpet about problems with deaths, mistakes, nothing. Nothing is ever mentioned about that. It's always swept under the ta- under the carpet, okay? It needs to be brought out. You should talk to the Board of Directors there, and, uh, you know, instead of praising them constantly, can we, can we see if we can correct some of the, the medical mistakes there? There, there, it's, it's outrageous, and you need to know about it. It's, uh, and, and, and there's also lots of medical fraud, okay? Uh, so there's lots that we don't know about our medical center. All we know is it's, it's the best, oh, wow, it's the greatest place of all, okay? So the performing arts, I'm so glad that that's finally going to happen. Although, until it does, I, I, I'm still, you know, I'm still, uh, wondering if that's ever gonna happen. And I, I'm starting to think now it'll be June, maybe, uh, maybe in the fall, huh? Hopefully?
Oh, no, springtime.
Springtime?
Springtime.
Okay, springtime. Okay, that's, that's about it. I still have my pet peeves, and, and I'll take those up with you, John, in the next eight months, which are the, the, the tax breaks to big developers, you know that? And, uh, not negotiating with them to get any locals' jobs, okay? So we'll talk about that in the next six months. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Carolyn Davis. I just want to say that I am very, very happy that this dilemma with the sanitation workers is now over. I cannot imagine having been them this whole summer, waiting to find out whether or not they had a job. I do hope that you will move forward in as quickly as possible to settle the contracts, because they still have that over their heads. Um, we need our sanitation workers. I speak to quite a few of them, and they do excellent, uh, work on my property, so I'm glad that phase of it is settled. But like they said, the other things that were brought up, the garbage trucks, that's been an issue probably for the last nine, ten years. So those things have to be put on the front of the burner, um, to get those done. Um, I also, about nine, eight, nine months ago, somewhere in the past year, I had brought up, uh, Mayor, about a situation when people go down to the courthouse, that they could no longer park in the municipal parking lot, behind the police station, they have to park in the municipal parking lot that's next to the fire department, and that's metered. And I felt that the people were, people were going to be penalized because if they're in court, we know they're going to be sitting there for three or four hours. So if they're in court, they're going to end up getting a ticket for their car and parking over. So I was hoping that some kind of negotiations could be made so that they could have a sign on their car in court or something like that. They're already paying a fine in court, so now they're going to get fined for staying out there. If they leave court, then they're going to be penalized for the judge by not being there when their name is called. So I do remember bringing that up, and I don't know if anything has happened because of that.
Nothing, nothing has, and my apologies, because I haven't really thought that much about it. I mean, we can't, we, we have to leave that, that as a metered lot, especially with the development going on, because it's going to be used constantly. I just don't, we need to discuss it as a council, whether that's something, um, that we even want to consider. They'd have to get, somehow get some type of tag or something to put on your car or their dashboard saying they're in court.
Yeah, for that thing, yeah.
And, uh, you know, I don't, I'd like to check with other municipalities how they do it. You know, I've, I've never heard of people going to court and, you know, getting free parking, but I know when I go to Patterson for certain things, or whether it's a worker's comp over there, whatever, where the courts are, I, I have to do the same thing. I gotta go in a lot and pay like five dollars for the day or whatever it is, or for the time I'm there. But, uh, that's something we really have to discuss.
Something just to think about.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Tros?
I don't, I don't disagree with the thought, but I don't know if it's going to fly or not. But I want to thank you for your support through all this, um, and I admire you for your support of the workers.
I do my work behind the scenes.
Absolutely.
Pastor Davis, you were one of the first people I talked to.
Thank you, ma'am.
Joe, P.O. Box 4104, Hackensack. I want to thank you for a great job. I want you guys to stay in office, and I'm glad you corrected that sanitation dilemma. Um, you know, it wasn't too many years ago that I made a deal to keep myself out of prison for ten years after being threatened in prison by someone let in through the guard door in Bergen County lockup, that rats like me get pencils in their ear. And they found drugs in my locker the next day that I hadn't put there. And that was the cost of speaking out against a past administration. They arrested me on fake charges for protesting on my own property, charged me with a terrorist offense, arrested my girlfriend, took away her child because I turned in police officers to the FBI, and they knew. And I questioned the death of a friend who, another police officer told me was murdered, and it was covered up by the Hackensack police. But I'm happy you're here for that reason, so I hope you, you, you keep listening to the people like, like the chief here did, this chief, you know, Ortam, you used the name. Getting to what I say, I want to talk, I was a member of the, uh, Italian American Society, uh, because my father was a full-blood Italian. I have history, papers, vellums from the seventeen hundreds with seals and crowns, and that's my family. And I would like to have a better idol than Columbus. I have so much information on Columbus. He was a murderer. His men tortured people by his word. The atrocities are there, people know it. It should be taught at our schools, and we should find a new Italian-American holiday and celebrate the real Italians that contributed to America. The real, smart ones, you know, there's so many of them. That's what we should do. And the same thing, we have more Native Americans here than you would believe. If I told you there's at least five thousand full-blood Native Americans here, you wouldn't believe me, but I can prove it. Ten thousand half-bloods, quarter-blood American Indians, who, because of Columbus and because of the conquistadors who followed him, were tortured, killed, and by a criminal church in those days. You know, you heard of the Spanish Inquisition. It's nothing compared to the genocide that happened on this land. So I propose that instead of Columbus Day, we find a new day for Italian-Americans, somewhere else in the calendar, and use a month for Native Americans and have a festival, a pow wow, a real Native American pow wow, and allow the people, the Ecuadorians, the Peruvians, uh, the Puerto Ricans, um, some of the Taínó people, I know some Taínó people, many people from South, Central, North America, many black people, also Cherokee, Choctaw, you know, many white people as well, you know? Make it a day of edu-, make it, change the education in our school. Put it in a curriculum. Go to the National Congress of American Indians, you'll get free curriculum from educated Native American historians. They'll give it to you, they'll give it to the school. Let's learn about our history, because we have people here, I've talked to a lot of Indians who I see as Indians, the same Indians I know out in the Midwest and the Southwest, they look a lot the same, some of them. I mean, it could be brothers and sisters. The people here don't even know they're Indian. They lost all that heritage. Let's help, help them get it back, because they, you can't stop who you are, you know? It's still in them. So let's, the costumes are great, you know? There, you've got to see the South American and Central American, uh, regalia. And the food, we can have a, we can have a pow wow in Fischkini Park, we can have a festival on...
That would be fun.
A parade of, of, of the zapatistas, you know, I'm not zapatistas, but, uh, you know, the various tribes in Mexico, Central America, we could be the first. So we can abolish Columbus Day in favor of, uh, of a, a better day for Italians, and then turn Columbus Day into a day of festivity and a month of education for the children in school, so people can rediscover the heritage that the onset of Columbus stole from everyone. And I, I hope you will consider that, because I'm going to keep coming back here until it's done, and I think you'll be setting a precedent that people will be proud of.
Thank you, Joseph. Appreciate it.
Your Mark, it's Annie Davis Avenue. I too like to call on my Italian-American heritage, and there's no question that we teach kids about Columbus at an early age, and one of the basic principles is we should never teach kids at an early age something that we have to unteach them at a later age. And we all know, anybody that has any reasonable sense of history knows, uh, the atrocities committed by Christopher Columbus in the name of Christ among the indigenous Americans. So that should not go unmentioned. Abolishing Columbus Day is probably not doable. I don't think we would want to do it. Probably, we should use it to teach the lesson of who Columbus really was, a victim of his times, as were the people that he persecuted, and we should learn from that when we speak today, when we speak it today about, uh, the issues we face, uh, with, uh, with the own racial issues that we face in our community, primarily racial, but intercultural as well, that there's a lot of history that has to be learned. People close their eyes to it, they close their ears to it, and they just like to assume that what they learned in kindergarten is, uh, the truth that's going to remain with them for life. Uh, I'd like to congratulate David on your retirement. I don't know that we got our money's worth in two years. Would have been nice, I know you're, you're a lightning rod, but you're at the top, and it's tough to beat a king, uh, but I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
And, uh, so Mr. Ehrenberg here, we'll see him the next time. Uh, an honorable name, Ehrenberg, brings back memories of a priest, uh, who grew up in Bloomfield, by the way, uh, Richard Ehrenberg, who was at Holy Trinity Church in Hackensack in the nineteen sixties and did a lot of valuable work with the youth. So died at an untimely age in his early sixties, but, uh, the name Ehrenberg, in my life anyway, having known him, is held in high esteem. He was my first scoutmaster when he was still in Bloomfield. I wanted to talk a little bit, just briefly commending whoever's responsible for this miraculous paving of streets that, in my forty-five years in Hackensack, forty-six actually, I've never seen so many roads paved. I know public service had a lot to do with many of them, but as David's mentioned, a lot had to do with the coordination between the city and public service to know what to do when. I'm sure there are nitpickers in the audience who will say we should have been advised every five minutes as which streets were going to be closed, but all in all, it was a very, very good job. I've never seen, uh, so many streets done so well. And then to find out that there was actually money left over, uh, and all of a sudden Linden Street is done, and Clinton Place is done, uh, streets that were never on the original list, I don't think.
And more to come.
And more to come, which I hope, brings us to my next point, since we've talked about it, um, Zabriskie Street between Main and Johnson. I mean, that is the pothole.
Actually, I think that is on the list, sir.
Okay, thank you. It's the last time you said you were waiting for the county to sell the land, and they were going to redo the intersection, and that's going to take forever.
We're gonna, we're gonna do where they're not going to disturb.
That's great. Well, they won't disturb that, I can tell you. That's, uh, between Main and, and Johnson, that would be great. And what was done, what was interesting, that fascinated me, was the coordination. I mean, the subcontractors, you had the catch basins being installed, you had the curb cuts, the E.D. requirements, you had the, the lining of the streets, the milling, and this stuff went around like clockwork, uh, except, uh, when some, one of the streets, uh, Lewis Street, I guess, we had to wait a week. All of a sudden, they stopped, and I thought they ran out of money or asphalt, and then came back the next week and finished it. Yeah, another town, they had another contract, I guess they had a... But it's great. I, I really want to compliment you on that. I want to talk too, a little bit about, uh, there's been some criticism that the last tax bills that went out had some, some fluff in them in terms of, I don't know, the accomplishments of the council in keeping the, the budget under control. Uh, I thought that was wonderful. I think, uh, some people criticized it, thought it was a political move.
In the tax bill?
Yeah, when the tax bills went out, there was, there was a statement there. Yeah, and that was done, I, I don't want to name names, it was done, I think about twelve years ago by the prior administration, uh, because they wanted to make sure that the residents knew that the Board of Education was responsible for the tax increase that year. I don't know what year it was, I don't have the document, but I remember it clearly getting in the mail, and I think it was the Board of Ed, they may have also tacked on the county, but they wanted to make sure that there was, I think there was actual municipal reduction that year. So you're in good hands, there's some precedent for that. I would, I would, you know, advise you to do it again with the new tax bills that will be going out, probably, if they're not gone out already. Uh, and I saw a little pilot blurb on the table, something that people would be interested in knowing, what are pilots, and how do they work? Something of value that probably could be added with the tax bill, since a lot of those questions will be asked. The tax appeals, they've accumulated over time. I mean, there's a lot of history there, and I know a lot of it is old, some of it may be more recent, but I think you're on the right track with that. And I would just say one more thing, and that is, uh, the blue line, the blue line. Let's respect our police, Black Lives Matter. If the cops want to get out there with a paintbrush and put a blue line in front of the city who all let them do it, we don't solve our problems by painting blue lines. We love our police, we love our firemen, we don't need paint to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Smith, Eight-O-eight Main Street.
Excuse me, sir. Please, Mrs. De Pasqua. It's being unruly, screaming from the back of the audience, all right? No one's doing it while you're speaking. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem, Mr. LaBrus. My name is William Smith, I'm, live at Eight-O-eight Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Here in the city of Hackensack. Um, once again, I've been here throughout the night. I haven't been here much to attend the meetings because of the kind of work I do. I'm a security officer, work long hours. I understand what these officers go through on a day-to-day basis. And especially, you know, trashing the bids and all that, that's a very good idea. I know that we're sitting in motion. My question is to you, Mr. LaBrus, what are we going to do to move forward, uh, as far as our police officers, our D.P.W., and getting the equipment that they need to move this city forward? Is there any type of idea where it's in place, or is, you know, is there something in motion for that, or?
Well, as far as, do you want to speak your five minutes?
No, I'm just, you know, I'm just curious, you know?
As far as the trucks, we will now, now that this process is done, we will instruct the city manager and the CFO, who will instruct the CFO to prepare, to go out to bid for, for new sanitation trucks, probably six. That'll take care of that. As far as, I'm not sure what we need, the council hasn't been brought up to date on anything in D.P.W. that we need immediately. Uh, I know we just purchased some new trucks for D.P.W.
Yes.
And, you know, that has to be brought to us as far as what they need. But we do know we need the sanitation trucks. We knew that, because that was part of why we went into the process. So we will immediately start that process now, and that takes a while, because those trucks just don't sit in a lot, and you say, "I want the blue one, blue one," you know? It takes about six months to get a garbage truck, unfortunately, so, set up.
The police and fire, Jim, our first year in...
We bought over twenty-two police cars.
Yeah, Dodge charges that were useless to the city anyways, as far as I know.
Well, we haven't any complaints with the cars.
They spent more time in a repair shop than they are actually on the road.
Is that true, Dave?
We, we just purchased a, a, a new van for the police.
Cool.
We have purchased, uh, some additional vehicles. Uh, we are looking at, uh, replacements, um, and they will be rotated out. I agree with you on the Chargers. I was not here when they were purchased, but they are obviously the lowest cost, and we needed a lot of them, and that's what the decision was based on. I, I think we can be a little bit more prudent on, on the vehicles, and, and I know the police are working on that. They don't like them either.
I know, they want a safe vehicle, and I know, I've been working with Dodge Chargers in, in the security field myself, and they're not a very comfortable car.
Well, worship. They have the intake low on the vehicle, so if you go in any kind of water, and you know Hackensack usually gets some water, it sucks it right into the engine and the car is shot.
Anyway, you know, now I'm very happy that, uh, as far as that is concerned. Now, as far as their contracts are concerned, um, are they going to actually get what they're going to need? Get the city in motion and just to keep everybody happy, and the police officers, you know, their raises and stuff, especially for the new guys, you know, as far as they're concerned, you know, give them something that they need, so they don't have to move on to other townships? Because I would like, I wouldn't want to see these officers go to other townships because he can't get a contract in, in place, you know? It's kind of tough. What would you be answer to that?
The, the contract is before PERC, which is the state commission, because the union has decided to potentially split up between sergeants and, and the, and the patrol. So it's stuck in there. So it's stuck in there. So we're waiting.
Okay. I've pretty much answered all my questions, thank you, and have a good night, Joe.
Excuse me, sir, what was your name again? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Oh yeah, my name is William Smith, 808 Main Street, City of Hackensack.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you that you were against it, of not going to prioritize. Thank you. Thank you for sharing our public experience.
Chris Coley?
Chris.
There was an article in the paper about the sanitation, and I happened to perusal the front of the article of the story on the paper. Patterson just built a school, $62 million, and we're looking to build one. And nobody yet has said where that money's going to come from. But I guess that's going to be left for the next council, so that the taxpayers in this town can have definitely the highest taxes in Bergen County.
Not at all, sir, not at all.
How much do you pay in taxes?
My building?
Where you live, your house, or how much?
They pay.
No, you, you pay.
I don't know, it's part of my, it's part of my bill. Now, they said, "We're not going to eliminate the garbage employees," which I think is a grand thing. But you are going to eliminate them to save money. So now we're going to buy, and this is your prices, six new garbage trucks at a half a million dollars apiece. Five hundred thousand was the number you gave out.
Six new trucks for a little under $2 million.
Okay. Where's that money coming from?
We'll put a plan into effect, it'll be bonding.
We'll borrow some more, we're just going to borrow another fresh 10, but when the taxes get so high that the people can no longer live in this town, they will always be able to play some basketball, they will be able to go in the splish splash, they'll be able to play indoor soccer, but they won't be able to pay for their housing.
So let me get this straight, we shouldn't supply any services for our children? No parks, no splash pads, nothing for our seniors? We shouldn't buy new trucks because they're too expensive?
What's the good of services for the children if the parents can't afford to live here anymore? Maybe give them a break first.
Our taxes have gone down, Mr. Coley.
Yes?
For 67% of the residents in this city, taxes have gone down.
Okay.
And we did that in three years, while dealing with all the other stuff we've been talking about tonight, supplying new splash pads, going forward with the Cultural Arts Center, a new sports dome, a new M and M building, and all that's not even going to raise taxes based on the way we have set it up with that service. So I, people that are here already are going to be paying the same or less.
I know, that's good math, but I have other things. I was driving up Atlantic Street, because I forgot the entrance to that parking lot is around the, as goes in front of the cultural center.
Right.
I made the turn, and I almost, I almost rear-ended a car parked at those parking meters that are illegal. They put cones, you have bags over them. How can you, I thought we had this problem with the stop signs, but I guess we just don't stop. They're not approved, and you let them park on Atlantic Street.
Mr. Coley, that is all changing when it goes to two-way. Those streets will not, that will not be a right turn anymore, because people will be going the other direction there. That's, they will all be eliminated once a street change.
But that's a turn lane. Why would you put those meters there knowing it's a turn lane? And leave the, leave the turn lane parking there?
You don't necessarily have to have, not every street has a turn lane to make a turn.
That one does, and you put two parking meters there.
It means we weren't planning on eliminating it, but it's going to be two-way, so it's irrelevant.
Okay. Now, my other question was, on Vincent Ave, at one time, when that was first made a road, you had a sign on the other side of Vincent Ave that said, "No left turns." It was only a right turn only, and if you needed to make a left, you went up to Poor Street, came down to the light, and you made the left. I've seen now, and I almost, I almost T-boned somebody, he went across the, put his car fully across the street, looking for an opening from the two lanes going on South Summit, going the other way. It is the scariest thing I've ever seen in my life. And I think, I think that's all that. Oh, and the last thing I had is, I hope Mr. Sims will be able to give me an apology for his statements that he made to me last week, putting words into my mouth. If you're the racist, stay a racist. Don't paint me as a racist. Thank you.
Hey, Lance Powell, 395 Golf Place, good evening.
Evening, sir.
Mr. Joe, it's a quick question for you. The sidewalks for the Hackensack High School, who's responsible for fixing those?
That's a good question. I'm not going to take a guess, because that would not be prudent. But I will make sure that that gets looked into. Usually, the property owner is responsible for the sidewalks, but I will find that out. Is there a problem?
They're horrible.
Okay.
And when they ask homeowners to fix their sidewalks, and they harass us to fix it, kids go to the high school, just take a drive over there tomorrow. If they can't fix the sidewalks for these kids, why are they even bothering the homeowners?
You have a good point.
The road from Nellie K. Parker, Maple Avenue Drive, I've asked a couple of times before, when are they going to fix it? This road is so important, a lot of parents drive on this road. Once again, goes back to kids. When they fix so many roads, the roads are beautiful, by the way. Who are going to fix that road that affects our kids and our teachers?
Where are Maple Hill? I am very pleased to say that a portion of Maple Hill Road will be paved this year.
Will be?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that should have been a priority, because I've asked several times. Once again, it's not just for me, it's for the kids.
Like I said, due to good management and a lot of hard work, a portion of your road will be repaved.
Okay, all right. Is that on the list?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, I'll just keep checking on that, thank you.
If it isn't, you can even call me at home.
You may be gone by then.
Now, I'll be, I'll be home.
Okay.
If it's after the 30th, you can still call me at home, if you can find me.
Okay, leave me a number, I will do that, thank you. Just have another question to, before another question, a point to make. Thank you for not moving forward with the sanitation issue. That was something that was dragging along, hanging over the city's head, and the workers, I'm sure, they had many sleepless nights, which is understandable, but I commend you for not going forward, and I think that was a pretty good decision. And I hope going forward that you can give them the tools to make them be successful in, you know, doing their job efficiently and moving the city forward. So, once again, I commend the people here from Hackensack for standing up, and I commend the council for listening and doing what, you know, that was the right thing to do. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And I hope these guys could go to work now, and work hard, and do their job the right way. One last question, taxes. What are we going to do going forward to lower taxes for the residents of Hackensack? I'm still hurting.
You want to answer that, Deputy Mayor?
Our plan has always been that we need to control our costs, which we've been doing with our budget each year, and to bring more ratables into the city. You know, unfortunately, you know, I wish I could snap my fingers and the buildings would be up and paying the increased prices that we know that they're going to be paying. So there's a little bit of pain over these next couple of years, until we start to see the return on that investment, but we will see it. It's an investment in our future, and it will affect not only the value of your home, but the impact on your taxes. We have, you know, been very, very serious at budgetary controls. You know, this last year, on a $100 million budget, the increase was only $2.5 million, of which $1.5 million alone went for the increased tax bill bond. That means we kept the entire city, that means health insurance costs, pension increase costs, salary costs to $1 million. You can compare that to a similar budget of $100 million at our high school, at our schools, our Board of Education. On their $100 million budget, their budget increased by $4 million, basically four times the increase that the city was able to do. So we're very proud of those accomplishments. It's not easy to do, and we will continue, and as difficult as it was to have to go out and obtain prices on sanitation, as hard as it was, that is our pledge to the city for everything we do. We will always gather the information and try our best to do the right thing for our residents. And there's going to be times where the decision isn't going to be all about money. We're going to sit, and we're going to talk, and we're going to listen, and I'd like, I thank you for saying that, I'd like you to believe that we did listen, and we do continue to listen. But we have a responsibility, and that's what we're doing, Lance, to try and control the taxes, is bringing more money and spend less money. It's as simple as that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Good evening, good morning, Kathleen Salvo. I think it was a little embarrassing what happened with sanitation. I think what it did show is the support that the residents of Hackensack gave these men. They appreciated what they did, what they do for us every day, and they respect them. And I think that's what was lacking in many years here. Give them these trucks that they need. They can't do their job without, without the trucks, and that should happen very quickly, as quickly as it happens for all the cultural art building. Money seems to appear out of the ceiling every time we need that. I'm very disappointed with the $89,000 for Boswell and the $490 for D M R. That's just for nothing, that's for services. We can use that money, Mr. Simmons, to pave, to fix the basketball court and M and M Building. We don't need these buildings to be bigger. That neighborhood cannot accommodate a bigger building. There's no parking for anything that's there. We have residents, we have the church, we have the school, and you cannot make that building bigger. There's no need for any other thing, any other thing to be bought there. All they need is to fix the court, basketball court, so they can play. We don't need all this money being spent there. And we don't need any facilities for senior citizens, because we have that on the corner of Hudson Street and Kansas Street. What are we going to do with the old Johnson, the old Johnson Public Library that's down there? We could use that for senior citizens, we could use that for meeting room. Learn to use or use the things that we have and try to save us money. These fees are outrageous. These are just, these are just fees for services. It's not going to translate into anything for the kids. If the fees are like that, what is the question of the things that come going to cost us? Just fix the courts on M and M Building and do not increase the size of that building. What else was there? There's just too much, too much money being spent. The same thing with the splash parks. With all the money we spent for splash parks, we could have put an indoor swimming pool that could be used 12 months a year and service everybody. And these splash parks are not, they're only, they're only good two months a year. And it was open the other day, it was freezing out, and it was open? I thought it was weather permitting, but you needed to put the heat on the other day, and the splash park was open and polycelled, which I don't understand why. I wasn't here for the bicycle thing, but we do have an ordinance that says you cannot ride a bicycle on the sidewalk. And it's very scary when somebody's behind you, because they don't have bells or anything. They're usually on their cellphone and on a bicycle, and nobody enforces that, I've been ten, three years, because if you walk out of a building, you can get creamed by a bicycle, because the pedestrian does not know. And it's not little kids, it's grown men that are riding to work, they're 200 pounds, and they're on their cellphones, they don't pay attention to the pedestrian, and they're very, very dangerous. So we need to move on with the sanitation, respect the men that work for us, and give them the tools that they need so they can do their job. Thank you.
Hey, I think nobody else, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second?
Vocal?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Castrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Geddes?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Mr. Pataglia?
First of all, Jim, congratulations for the good job that you did with Kathy and Maria. And you brought that morning that we can finish with the tax appeal. I want to send David for the two years that he's been with us, and we accomplished a lot of things together. And I have so many people that are coming to me and saying for their reduction in their taxes, sometimes they can believe. And the other thing that I have to say, that I hear always from people from the Board of Education, they come into us, we, to try to, like, point all the mistakes that we've been doing. I wonder, what have they got on their side? The superintendent disappeared, and nobody knows why. And there are so many other cases that I know, but they don't say anything about it. And the parents, they don't go to their meetings to try to get information, what happened with the principal, with the superintendent, with the gym teacher, and on, and on, and on. So I wonder if Mr. Solkanson, they can say something about all these cases, okay? And thank you for coming.
You're welcome. You know what I said for you, man?
Please.
Leo alluded to our, Jim, and my visit to the local finance board a week or so ago. We talked a little bit about this at the COW meeting. Things went well, we were able to secure the maximum term of seven-year financing on our third installment with another $10 million loan towards these tax appeals. One of the things I think that was so, very, very well received, is they were very interested, we're one of the, one of the early comers to the table to try these rolling tax assessments and doing this reassessment this year. And they were very interested to follow and hear our numbers. And, you know, our hope was always to stop tax appeals from being successful, but we also were able to stop tax appeals from even being filed. I mean, in this past year, since we did the assessment, our county tax appeal numbers were down by 55%, and our state tax appeals were down by another 41%. And just filing it doesn't even mean you're guaranteed success, but just to even see that we've been able to reduce the filing of those tax appeals, shows that moving forward with this plan is certainly something in the right direction. Today, we had the pleasure of being at a couple of nice events. The North Bergen Community Action Program has opened up their credit union on the corner there, Side Chases Building there on the corner of Main and Warren. So they'll be open for business. I mean, it's a wonderful organization, they've been around now, I think they said seven or eight years.
Well, 60 years altogether.
And, no, I mean, as far as the credit union.
Yes.
And, you know, the Community Action Program does wonderful, wonderful things, not only for the city, but for the county. But providing this type of service with this credit union is, you know, something that was longtime needed in the city, and it provides a wonderful valuable service. And following that, over at the Cultural Arts Center, we had our groundbreaking this morning. Construction is starting. Some folks talked about, when do we expect the anticipated date for opening or completing construction is March? You know how things go, so I'm hoping, you know, worst case, it's going to be April-ish timeframe. But we're very, very excited, and we're already, you know, starting to look at the types of venue, the types of things we're going to bring into this new venue. A lot of hard work by a lot of folks, you know, Greg and his team doing a great job over there as well. David, we wish you well, enjoy your retirement, and we welcome Ted. You know, we, we're a busy town, busy city, as you see, and we look forward to having you join us. Questions about sanitation? We collected the data, our CFO did the analysis, and we agree with the recommendations. The bids did not justify us pursuing this, we're not going to go out for any more bids. We have our information, it's well documented. Now, what do we do next? Next step, we need to develop and fulfill the vehicle replacement plan. We have to totally identify the number and the types of vehicles we need, making sure that we select the kinds of vehicles that we know we need in that department, and our CFO will tell us. I mean, it usually doesn't make sense if we say we need six, it usually doesn't make sense to buy all six at once, because then they're all going to be, continue to recur. So we may be winding down two, and two, and two, or three and three, whatever, but that plan I'll leave up to Jim, working very closely with the folks in D P W, to get the kind of trucks, the kind of equipment that we know is the right fit for the city. And as with all contracts, our goal is to settle that D P W contract, get it behind us. Unfortunately, as the city manager explained, mediation can drag on and on. It's no one's fault. I'm happy to see that there's a meeting day in October, and let's hope that we can go into this with a determination. I know the city wants to settle this, and I know sanitation D P W wants to settle it. So what my expectation is, let's get there together, let's sit at the table, and let's do the right thing, the right thing for the city, the right thing for the sanitation workers, and let's get on with our lives. Mr. McCourt, your comments kind of about why we were doing this. Our pledge has always been to the residents that we will look at all potential cost-saving initiatives. That's our responsibility to our residents. And sometimes it isn't all about the money. In this case, neither the money nor the comments from the public and the feedback we've received warrant us moving forward in that direction. But we, we're required to do this. We have to, folks are here questioning, how are we going to reduce taxes, how are we going to afford to live here? We would be delinquent in our responsibilities and our roles if we did not look into each and every way and document what the, what the control mechanisms are. And it actually benefits us to have this information, to look at where do we stand with our sanitation department compared to how other people are doing sanitation? It gives us the data we need to move forward in the right direction. And I want to make sure that everyone understands from sanitation D P W, that our offer is still on the table. Just because we're not moving forward with sanitation being privatized, it doesn't mean that if folks in that department still want another job, they want to try something different, they want to learn a new, a new task or trade, that we are not going to support that, 100%. they want to learn a new task or trade, that we are not gonna support that 100%. I want the men in that department to know and understand. That was our commitment when we said there would be no layoffs, that we would try to find a series of these folks to train them and bring them into other parts of the organization. That offer is still on the table. If they want to get CDL licenses, we can use more drivers. We support that and we encourage that. There has to be career development payouts for everyone in the city, and that, I think, is the primary way we show our appreciation for these men, is we want to listen. If you want to try something different, we're here for you and we want to see that happen. As far as the police department contract, we're hoping that Ted's experience with the inner workings of the police department will hopefully expedite that whole process, and we look forward to getting the resolution of that contract behind us as well. Going through my list, there was a few questions tonight about the parking meters. Yes, we understand it was a little confusing. I was even a little confused. I think she's left, Regina. You know, what we passed tonight was only adding parking for the drop-off for the library. I don't like things that are inconsistent. Personally, it's just something that goes against my grain. So I'm not happy with the fact that it's nine, we're enforcing it as six, signs are saying nine. We're gonna straighten it all out. Hopefully, we get it on the agenda for next time. At this point, we listened, we hear folks. They don't want this at this point in Main Street, and I agree with you. We're not at that point yet. Let's not discourage or hurt the many business owners that have stayed the course and supported us here in this city for a long time. Our intention is not to hurt them but to support them. So we will be certainly making those changes back to 6 o'clock on the parking meters. Mr. Salkin, on the HUMC agreements for the air rights. Our CFO has presented the financial advantages of the plan with the medical center. Perhaps you need to revisit it. No insult to you, Mr. Salkin, but I certainly am gonna put my money behind our CFO's analysis, and I welcome you to challenge that analysis. I have challenged your numbers, and I've told you that. Just look at your projections. If you have common sense, you're gonna realize that the numbers you're projecting from could not possibly be accurate. So when you look back and you see what really went on here, you will understand why the data you're presenting is inaccurate. And I ask you and invite you to do that, and feel free to talk to me anytime about that as well. Come up afterwards and we'll, excuse me. I will do that to you.
Arrange your talking appointment later, please. Thank you.
I will do that to you. I would like to thank the rest of you for coming this evening and bearing with us till 10 o'clock at night, and hope to see you again next time. Thank you, folks.
David?
Mr. Troost, I want to wish you good luck on your journey and your next chapter in your life, and hopefully you don't write a book about City Hall. This is the last week that the splash park will be open until next year. Next Saturday, the UNICO along with the REC Center will be having a Columbus Day program in Columbus Park at 10:00 a.m. This past Saturday, we lost a pioneer here in Hackensack. J. Herbert Levitt, who was the first African-American councilman here in Hackensack, passed away. And I am honored and humbled to sit up here keeping his dream alive. Kathy and Chris, I will continue to pray for you. Good night.
I also wanted to send my condolences to Mr. Michael Fahey's family, the firefighter who lost his life just recently, and also to the family of Mr. Herbert Levitt. I remember Mr. Levitt. As a youngster, I went to school with his daughter, and they lived on, what's that street? By Berry? I can't remember the street. But anyway, they were a lovely family, and I remember when they moved away, and I was, you know, a little saddened by that because I really liked Anita. But as the first councilperson, African-American councilperson, he opened the door for all of the following African-Americans, Latinos, and I might even say females, to, you know, put their bid out to be on the city council. And I do believe that he has due a proclamation from this council for his leadership. So we talked about that earlier, about getting a proclamation for his family. Mr. McCourt, tell your worker, tell the sanitation guys they should stay into our comments so they can hear what we have to say.
They have to get to bed, you know?
Oh, yeah, that's right. They have an early day. Okay, okay, okay. Anyway. Well, as you know, I was against privatization from the start and was glad the numbers came in the way they did. Please tell your guys that, you know, they've seen that the whole town is, well, was and is behind them, and they should not take that for granted. They should be proud of the work that they do, and they should do it to the best of their ability. Do it with pride because they rank up there with the police department and the fire department as far as their importance in this city. So, you know, I'm glad to hear that, you know, the council is saying that we're gonna get the trucks and whatever they need to do their job properly. Thank you. Mr. Campania, is he still here? No. Okay. Anyway, I enjoyed hearing him speak and Mr. Marcusani about the real Christopher Columbus. There is a tribe up in Mawa called the Ramapo Indians. They had a nickname called the Jackson Whites, what they hate to be called. But anyway, he was talking about having a powwow here. They have powwows up there kind of regularly, but I have a close friend who is a member of that tribe and would love to put him in touch with him because they would like to get their history out there. They're, you know, we have a tribe right here in Bergen County that a lot of people don't even know about. David, I will miss you. As a new kid on the block, you've been very patient with me, answering my questions and concerns, and I have a newfound respect for the city manager position. It's a tough one, and I guess you have to have a little bit of craziness with you, you know?
I, well, that was demonstrated today.
Yes, in order to do something like this. But you've moved the city ahead. You know, nobody's perfect. Nobody's perfect, and regardless of all of the bullets that you took, you did it with grace and with style, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you're not afraid to say that you're a man of faith because you have to have faith in order to do something like this. And I really appreciate that you're not ashamed of that. And I wish you all the luck in the world, and I'm sure you'll be back here to visit us one day.
It's gotta wait six months.
Oh, six months? Okay, we'll see you in six months. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Today, like Deputy Mayor said, we did the groundbreaking for the Cultural Arts Center. It was a great day. It was well-attended. Weather actually turned out pretty nice. It was good. It was actually on Channel 12 News, I saw a blurb out there. City Manager mentioned I had a workshop here for New Jersey Futures, which was about our Phase 1 and Phase 2 sewer separation projects. Hackensack is one of three municipalities in the county of Bergen that have, still have combined sewers. Combined sewers are when your stormwater and your sewage mix together, they're all sent down to the BCUA. You pay for all that stormwater to be treated along with the sewage. It's a very expensive process. DEP, EPA, a lot of the organizations out there now, the regulators as they call them, are now demanding the separation take place. We're ahead of the curve, curve, I should say, by a lot. We're getting a lot of recognition. At this meeting was the DEP. We actually had a company from DC Water, which is the water infrastructure service for Washington DC, sharing how they deal with their stormwater situation, and it's a totally different method where they build tunnels and store the water, and it's totally, totally different than ours. But they have a lot more flooding problems actually than we do. They have three rivers surrounding Washington DC, so it's, they get a lot of problems down here. Phase 2, which will be going soon, there's grants available. Money's a lot available. 75% of the loans we get would be at 0% interest, but 25% would be half a prime, so the money to do these jobs, to redo the sewers, which need to be done, have to be done, federal regulations, will be not cheap because the jobs are ridiculously expensive, but at least you're not paying a lot of interest on the money. So we're moving forward with that. Phase 2 will be starting soon. It's very important, you know, you'll never separate every single line throughout the city, but if you can separate, you know, the largest percentage, it'll keep the sewage out of the rivers, and really, that's the goal here. And the other part of that, it's very important what we use that goes into the sewers as far as stormwater, fertilizers, all these things affect the rivers tremendously and in a bad way, so we have to be careful with that. A lot of people have short memories. When this council mentioned it wanted to look, and I mean just look, into privatization of solid waste pickup in our sanitation department, the community came out and spoke their minds. Really spoke their minds. This council listened and was open-minded. Deputy Mayor and myself met with local clergy and with the NAACP to have a very open and transparent discussion on the matter. We listened to the community and immediately made the decision that no Hackensack worker would be laid off or fired if there was a chance of privatizing part of the department. We made that commitment based on your comments and the comments of other leaders in the community. And as all you know, the numbers came in very high, showing little or no savings to the citizens, and now we are committed to go to bid and bring our fleet up to where it should be so their employees have the right equipment to do their job. This process is not an easy process, and we know how hard it is on everybody. And you know, when you sit up here, you get to see things in a much different perspective than from where you are down there. I've been down there. We see the alliances being formed, we see the different people taking opportunity for inroads with people in the audience. I want to bring back some memories. Back in 2008, some of the very same people that many of you out there are listening to now are the very same people who were behind and are supporting the firing of eight Hackensack employees. Union employees, by the way. Why? Because they're gonna save money, just like we were. They were presented with privatization. Eight fire-trained EMTs were sent packing so this city could finish their developer's agreement with Hackensack University Medical Center. Now, as you heard tonight, I work at Hackensack University Medical Center. Worked there then, I work there now. I was one of the people who was the most outspoken about that deal. I said it stunk then, and it stunk more over time. We've had to renegotiate much of the original deals. We were told by our professionals that it would not hold up in court. We were told that the service was going to be equal or better. I still believe it's not equal or better. I bring this up not to rehash a horrible time for the city and the eight men who lost their jobs, but because some of the people up here were the ones against the redevelopment agreement. I'm talking up here now. We spoke out just as you did. Guess what? No one listened. We had more signs, we had more petitions. No one listened from that council. Eight good men lost their job to a service that was said to be equal or better, and it wasn't. Bottom line is, this council listened to the community. We listened to the clergy, we listened to the civic leaders in our city. We heard you loud and clear. That is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to go through the process, but we're also supposed to listen so we can make our decision. I still have my "Save the Eight" sign in my basement, and it's a reminder every time I go down there of the sad time in history in Hackensack. That's one of the driving reasons we moved quickly to come out and say, you know what? No one's gonna lose their job. We'll only do this if we can figure a way to save money by keeping everybody's jobs and still be able to save the money. We listened. They did not. Now they're the ones with the "Save Our Sanitation" signs on their lawns. Ask how many of those people who have those SOS signs on their lawns had "Save the Eight" signs on their lawns. You'll see that it's very few. If you look at our political opposition and drive by their homes, you'll see many of them have SOS signs up. Most of them, in my opinion, could give a darn about our employees. They're doing it for political reasons or whatever and to getting back for the upcoming election. Let's not be fooled. Ask any fireman in this city that was here at that time who had their back and who didn't when it came to "Save the Eight." In closing, I'm so glad that the sanitation issue is over. I truly am. We're doing what we're supposed to do as elected officials, but now we look forward to working with the department on getting the equipment we need. I want the men to know that, yes, this was a personal issue because it involved their livelihood. We know that. We know that. But people in power, like, that are put in power like this have to make these decisions and go through with it to see what the numbers are. It was not easy for them. I ask at this time that we just all move forward as we make this city the best that it can be. We are gonna do everything we can to get these contracts solved that was brought up tonight. People have to realize, I don't know what these guys, whether they realize or not, but I get the feeling that they think the council's sitting in on contract negotiations. In our form of government, it doesn't happen. We don't know anything until there's a negotiation or an understanding of some kind, and then it's brought to us, and that hasn't happened. So they keep saying we're doing this to them and we're doing that to them. You know, it's, and I'm more than happy to take it because of what they're going through. I understand. But, you know, it's kind of an unfair shot sometimes, but I'm glad this part of Hackensack history is over and we can move forward and put it behind us, and we will see that they have everything they need and that everything else is addressed. Now, at the last council meeting, I was very surprised to see Ms. Lynn Hurwitz, Mrs. Lynn Hurwitz, read a prepared statement attacking me and other council members, calling us corrupt. So I thought I'd make a few notes of my own. I wish Mrs. Hurwitz was here, but she's not. She also sang the praises of the Ziza family political machine that ran Hackensack, in my opinion, into the ground for decades. For those who are not aware of the facts, Mrs. Hurwitz is a local political party boss who was probably the most powerful person in Hackensack not named Ziza for a long time. That ended three years ago when the voters voted this council in and elected a new city government. As a local party boss, Mrs. Hurwitz is Ziza's most trusted general. That makes her almost as responsible as they are for what has happened to this city, with self-serving deals, outrageous mismanagement, all paid for by higher and higher property tax increases year after year. Go back and look at the numbers. Mrs. Hurwitz helped turn Hackensack into what we all called Zizaville, a city where the Zizas and her family and friends all got, a lot of them got jobs through the county. One of her closest friends is none other than Chief Charles Ziza, and after being convicted several times and seeing those convictions overturned, I gotta say that he's dodged a bullet and, you know, is out now. Under Chief Ziza, several police officers had signed under oath that they were coerced into buying political fundraising tickets and doing political work. Police officers who refused to say they were harassed and punished with poor work assignments and their careers were threatened. He never cared about these good officers who were just doing their jobs. For him, it was about the politics, not the public safety. Now, Mrs. Hurwitz insults these fine officers and calls them all liars. This is a complete disgrace, in my opinion, to our police department. As many of you know, Mrs. Hurwitz tried to make Ken Ziza a state senator, choosing to support him instead over our excellent Senator Loretta Weinberg, an outstanding legislator who is the exact opposite of what's in the Ziza machine. Senator Weinberg stood up to corrupt county party boss who is now actually sitting in a federal prison, and Mrs. Hurwitz sided with the corrupt party boss against her. At no surprise. It's also a fact that the same party boss helped get Lynn Hurwitz a political patronage job. She wasn't an administrator. That job paid close to $100, around $100,000. She didn't run a county agency. Her job was pure political pork. And no surprise either, Lynn's husband, Howie, found a home on the public payroll as well, making about $140,000 in the county utilities agency. So everyone should realize that when Lynn Hurwitz was asking voters to support her political candidates, she was really asking them to support almost $250,000 a year in political patronage salary for herself and her husband, plus the lucrative benefits package. But that is the world that they occupied. It was Zizaville, and it brought our city nothing more than dirty politics and abandoned Main Street and skyrocketing property taxes. When the voters finally got rid of them, they left a $30 million budget hole behind to fix. That was their parting gift to taxpayers, and now they want to take control of our city again. And the Zizas know they can count on Lynn to do whatever they need. Earlier this month, that meant attempting, in my opinion, to disrupt a fundraising dinner sponsored by Citizens for Change, which is our group. Lynn and her political people, person, Rick Salkin and her husband set themselves up at a table in the same restaurant, right at the front of the entrance door, right there when you walk in, 10 feet to the right. The restaurant was almost empty and they could have sat anywhere, but in my opinion, she wanted to be seen. She wanted to see who was coming in that door. She wanted to know if any city or school employees were there. She wanted to know who else was there. Her presence sent a chill through the room. Comment after comment was made upstairs where the event was held. It was a clear act of political intimidation, a heavy-handed, disgraceful machine politics maneuver that was an embarrassment to our city. Several people were told, do not go up there. You don't belong up there. That's a terrible thing to say to anybody.
I was at the table, it was never said, idiots. You ever heard what I said? Yeah, Rick Salk called you an idiot, I do. I was there because I live across the street.
Mrs. Hurwitz finished her remarks at the last meeting with a veiled threat, don't poke the bear. She warned with a smirk as she walked away, but many of us don't see it. But many of us don't see a bear anymore. We see disgraced old party boss determined to put diseases back in power, but the days of corrupt background political wheeling and dealing in this city are over. They are part of the past, and they're not coming back. The last thing the residents of this city want or need is a return to what we had. Hackensack is doing much better without them, and the citizens know it. And that's my comments for the night. David, I want to thank you so much. This was not an easy job for you to take. You know, I remember when we interviewed you, we told you what it was like. You know, it's tough. The people in Hackensack are tough. I wish you nothing but the best in the future. I hope you take some time off and...
Cabo San Lupe.
Yes, sir. Go to Cabo, have a good time, get yourself, you know, settled down, come back and make some plans for whatever you want to do. I think it's great that you're retiring, you're a young man to retire, so this is a great thing.
Don't trust me.
And you're right, we've done some great things together, the paving, the, you know, the development, you know, Cultural Arts Center, parks, I mean, we've done a lot together, and I appreciate it. And I wish you nothing but the best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Yep. Motion to close the meeting, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.